Would like to call this meeting to order. A pledge of allegiance and moment of silence, please.
You can please stand. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain silent for a moment. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President Trustees, members of the audience, colleagues. Yes, sir, Mr. President Trustees, I'd like to be certain that we remove both an executive and an open letter E will be removed to be rescheduled at a later time. And we also want to be on record that letter F, which was scheduled to be closed in executive and then coming up for open, that all both of those Fs will be discussed in an open session. That's what we got.
Any questions? All right, floor and the superintendent's report.
Mr. President Trustees, item one, there is a report, discussion and possible action to approve rescheduling the regular board meeting to July 25th. And obviously, the rationale for this is because as a district, we are closing effective June 29th, 6:00 PM, the district will be closed, and then officially will come open again on July 17th. When we look at the calendar, that is a Monday, so obviously, the way we have our coordinating schedule is always the second Tuesday in a month. In this case, that July 10th would be the second Tuesday. And even though we are returning, we are returning on the 17th, that July 11th would be the Tuesday, which is to be on vacation. So to say that we're going to have it on the 18th right afterwards, we wanted to give the district one week, and that's why we referred to the 25th as rescheduling the regular board meeting for July, that would give administration at least one week. Now, I know that as trustees, I want to make sure that we're okay. Is the rain going to be out?
Yes, I'm going to be traveling for work, so I won't be here that week, but I am, are we able to explore calling in through conference line or something like that?
Yeah, potentially on Skype, I know we've done it. I don't know if it's just Skype.
Got your recommendations, too?
Yes, sir. Some recommendations.
I recommend a change. Is any other further discussion? Negative. I got a motion by Mr. Avila to approve. Second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Vote, motion carries.
Mr. President and the trustees, item number two is something that we read first when we discuss. Discussion and possible action on approval of nominations for the TASD, which is Texas Association of School Board of Director for Region One, Place A. And the reason why we have this is because at this point in time, the nominations are, will be open. And what we currently have also for your information is that, first of all, as a trustee, as a member of trustees, if any one of you would like to be nominated, obviously, a colleague will nominate you, you will accept nomination, then we would have you fill out all the information that's printed to the particular questionnaires. And then at a later time, from July 3rd through August 29th, the actual elections will be taking place for the nominated candidates. If, for some reason, no one from this board of trustees wishes to be part of that, then we would bypass this, because currently, the person that's representing Region One, Position A, is a member from Brownsville ISD. Her name is Sylvia Fettis Atkinson. And she will be seeking reelection, so it's important for you all to know that that's one. And number two, if there's a nomination from any one of our trustees here, this is the time to do so.
Is there anybody that wants to make a nomination or be nominated? Negative?
No.
State, no action?
No action, okay. And we'll go as noted as well, so that the next time on the July meeting, we'll bring the actual voting. Item three, Mr. President and trustees. Discussion and possible action regarding the findings from a special accreditation investigation, SAI, conducted by the Texas Education Agency, TEA, Special Investigations Unit, SIU, pursuant to the authority set forth under Texas Education Code 39.057. And in this case, I return it up to our board president for discussion.
I don't believe that this is going to require any particular action, but I think it's open to discussion. If anybody wants to shed some light as to what transpired during this, you may have a floor.
This report, is it considered final yet from TEA?
It is final.
And so what is, are we able to share it in full to the community, the public? And what's the best way you think we should do that?
I know that council, we have June 19th as the due date to submit a request, a formal review request. Our general council did submit that information on that day, when we met the due date. And in essence, there's no, we will not be contesting that, and will be in terms of the report. We did get confirmation today, July 22nd, coming from TEA. I can read this. And it was addressed to Board President, Chief Francis Sinoceros, it was addressed to Attorney General Castillo, Superintendent, and it says, Dear Mr. Sinoceros, Mr. Castillo, Mr. Vera, this letter serves as notice that Dona Penney School District had now requested a formal review as authorized under Texas Education Code 39058, the 19 Texas Administrative Code, by established deadline of June 19th, 2017. Therefore, the enclosed preliminary report issued on June 1st is now considered a final report. Please contact me should you have any questions. Brenda Myers is the director. And so in essence, each trustee, the initial letter, I believe you received the letter two days ago, certified, is exactly what we received electronically on June 1st. And basically, what I just read, it says that that's going to stand as is, and now this particular case has been closed with them, and we will be awaiting whether or not the recommendation that the deputy commissioner made to the commissioner in terms of assigning a monitor. And I can read that recommendation for the sanctions, I might have just signed, recommendation for sanctions is the very last page of the initial report. Based on the findings, the deputy commissioner recommended the commissioner that a monitor be appointed in accordance with Texas Education Code 39057, D, because Dona ISD has demonstrated that it lacks sufficient internal controls to allow the Dona ISD Board of Trustees to comply with the requirements of state law in accordance with Texas Education Code 11.1511. The agency refers to the right to implement all available interventions and sanctions under Texas Education Code Chapter 39, and 19 Texas Administrative Code Chapter 97, to address the current or any future deficiencies identified by Dona ISD. So again, that is a letter that came in, and of course, the findings were the three, findings, findings one, findings two, findings three. And those reports, each of you have a copy of. I'll open it up for you again, if anybody wants to discuss.
I have a question. How can the, I know besides then looking, you know, each individual, the community looking up via internet or going to the website, can this report be put in, or we post a meeting notices, to allow people that don't have internet access to, you know, because we're trying really hard as a board to be accountable, have directors, et cetera, be accountable, and ourselves be accountable? And because the things weren't being done according to what we should have had done, we're now in this situation. And it's just to notify our community that we are trying to do our due diligence and doing the right thing.
Can the, can the copy of this letter be released to the news media? A full copy?
Yes.
So I can give that to any journalist, doesn't matter?
Yes.
You're free to release it.
You can discuss it.
Any way you want to release it, through the internet, you can send a newsletter.
Because it's public information now.
It's public response, so.
Have our public information.
It's free to be released however you guys want to release it.
I want to go on record, I did talk to Ms. Brenda Myers on the day when I received the actual letter, and she called me back, and, you know, I expect her that this is totally, totally, with the exception of Mr. Sinoceros, the rest of the six board members are all new. Mr. Sinoceros was in no way mentioned as any, in part of this report, so I guess I would be free to say that the present board was not in any way, shape, or form implicated in any wrongdoing. Therefore, you know, I think that in the, that we've tried to be and remain as transparent as possible, and I think that the fact that we're going to invite the monitors to come in and help oversee if there's any deficiencies, irregularities, or any other thing that we feel, or that they feel that needs to be brought to our attention, you know, we're going to welcome it as a sign of good faith, that we want to make sure that Dona ISD is as transparent as possible. You know, we're welcoming this monitor if it is assigned to us, and we're going to work with us, and I'm willing to, you know, I've been assured by Mr. Castillo that he welcomes that person also, you know, so we want to make sure that we're. Proactive, Ms. Matt.
That the nominations that were found by TEA occurred, yes, they did, there is no denying that those things happened. So there was no sense in appealing those things. If those things were transpiring, there was no sense in going in there and try to defend something that was not defended. So we are, we are, we are willing to accept whatever the commissioner decides. It is in his hands. If he says, you got a monitor, we got a monitor, we'll work with a monitor, we welcome him here, and if nothing else, you know, it'll help us get on the right track, probably a lot faster. That's. Anybody else have anything to add to it?
I just, well, add that the findings were between 2014 and 2016.
Any further discussion? I think, like I said, I don't think there's any action to be taken here, so I think you can go on to number four.
Mr. President and trustees, item number four. Report and update on the district vision and goal setting process. In your packet, you do have the back of information regarding this, and this time, I'll turn it over to our secretary of trustees, Ms. Alicia Reyna, and I do want to say that she's been very diligent with everything on here. And it is because of her really behind-the-scenes work that we were given, because I know we had a chance to read all these comments, but it was powerful. And powerful because I think at the end of the day, we have allowed any and all employees that have access to the responses, and it's good to see that, because in no way or fashion was anything done to, with the intent to say, okay, give us a gotcha, even though you had one or two that, you know, had some of the responses, but, so this consisted of three questions, and do you want to go over them?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, in this update, we're not taking any action right now, it's really, I just wanted to update you all on where we are in this process, so recap kind of where we've been. So if you remember, one of the, some of the key responsibilities in governance for school board, we are, I know that you all talked about this, this came up at your professional development in San Antonio this last weekend, but is to co-create a vision, set superintendent and board goals that align to a budget, and also monitor and track progress towards those goals. So this is the effort towards that. So we sent out a survey monkey, we also visited nine different CL PAC and DL PAC meetings during the month of May, so that was one forum. The other forum was the survey monkey. 395 people completed that survey, and that's the printout that you have here. And like Mr. Castillo was saying, I think it's so powerful to hear, to read people's words in their words, and this is what's going to help us reshape, re-envision where we're going as a school district. The first question here is really around, like, it's going to help us shape the vision and mission, the first two questions. The third question around, if you had a magic wand, what would you change? That's going to really help us figure out, are preliminary superintendent board goals the right ones? Are we heading in the right direction, or are folks telling us something kind of very different? And as you could see, there's some themes that are continuously coming up, both in strengths of the district, and then also what people want to see changed. So I give this to you all now, because the district will be closed for two weeks, which gives you a total of three weeks to peruse these. You're going to also get copies of the actual notes that people wrote during the CL PAC meetings, so each one of you will have this. So you'll have some weeks to spend some time, some night reading, to read people's thoughts here. But then, what we're going to do when we get back together in July is we're going to come together and all lead us in a workshop to design the vision, mission, and then solidify the board goals. Because again, our, where we hope to get is before the school year, before the end of August, early in the school year, we have a clear vision, mission, and board and superintendent goals. And remember, we've already approved a superintendent evaluation. Once we adopt these goals for the district, those superintendent goals will be a part of the superintendent evaluation. And we've already approved the superintendent evaluation calendar. So all these pieces really fit together, and so that's kind of where we'll be, you know, reading now, but then we'll come back in July into August and come to final decisions and votes on it by the August meeting. So any questions about that?
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
I like the word "comments."
I'm thinking you're sitting at home in your bed, like.
There you go. Good one.
Reading through the survey data.
Any other, anybody else have any questions?
I just want to commend, Ms. Reyna for taking the lead on this. There's a lot of time and effort that went into this. I want to just repeat, rather than read out the questions, the three questions. The question one was, name one of our biggest strengths as a school district. Question two, why do you choose to work/teach in Dona ISD? And question three, which was ready to do two, what do you envision and dream for the students of Dona ISD? What do you dream and hope for the future that would be true in five years, which is similar to the magic wand? So again, it was very powerful, and I appreciate all the work that was ready to do, and please do read it.
And just a helpful hint, as you peruse these, what I would ask you to focus on is what are the themes, the ongoing ideas that are consistently coming up in multiple responses? So that's the synthesis we're going to do when we come back together. So kind of when you read it, take an eye towards what is coming up consistently that many, many people are saying. That's the update.
All right, moving on to number five.
Yes, sir, Mr. President and trustees, and again, thank you, Ms. Reyna. Item five, discussion and possible action on memorandum of understanding for Dona ISD and Teach for America Accelerate Fellowship interns, which again, we also, some of you may have known as TFA, that's what it stands for, Teach for America. This particular one, I know that we are having a very unique opportunity that we, during the summer, are able to bring in some interns, and these interns, some of you that may not be familiar about our Teach for America candidates, they're individuals that go through an intensive training, specifics to pedagogy with success.
Oh, let me make one distinction here, Mr. Castillo. So these are not our core members, these are, these are rising undergraduate students, so they're juniors and seniors, and this program is a national program that's helping to recruit and inspire our generation, our young generation that's in college right now, to be leaders in education. And so Teach for America started this fellowship to do that, and then it gives undergraduates, juniors, and seniors who are high in their class, opportunities to intern for the summer, and those summer internships are paid for by Teach for America. On our end, on the district end, there's no monetary cost, but the cost to the district is really the manpower, the support, the over, like, the, you know, the, and we're thinking Mr. Funes and the parental involvement department would oversee, it would be his time, right, working with the interns, helping them understand the lay of the land in the district, and then also overseeing the project that the interns would take on for our district. So we would get some work back for them, and we were thinking from them, and we were thinking that it would be something in the world of like, and they've named a focus here around support for undocumented students, and undocumented students getting to college, being prepared for college, so I think it really also integrates with our resolution for safe zones for learning. So there's all these different pieces coming together, but these interns would come to us and help us on some of the projects that are very important to the school district. And I am going to say from this vote, because I, you know, I work on staff at Teach for America, and obviously, there's a friend of mine that brought this opportunity to us, so, is there any questions on it?
The dates that they will be here with us would be from July 24th through August 3rd. And if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
Recommendation to approve? Motion by?
Second.
Mr. Gavero, second, by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
Favor. Abstain?
Motion carries.
Moving on to academic services, AS one, discussion and possible action on the approval of advancement via the determination, Avid contacting the amount of contractors, the amount of 22,794 for 2017, 2018 school year, and you have this in your packet in here, this is what we use when we go with district-wide for our Avid program. So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval on this.
Any discussion? Recommendation to approve?
Sumo.
Motion by Mr. Gavero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
Oppose?
Favor.
Motion carries.
AS, sir.
Six in favor.
AS two, discussion and possible action to approve the 2017, 2018 school calendar to reflect the revised 2018 graduation date for both high schools. And on this one, what specific is going to do, the calendar convention center did not have the June 1st, 2018 date available, therefore, the only date available was May 30th, 2018. Both high schools agreed on this, and it was available for May 30th. The last day for student will be Wednesday, May 30th. And so we have this that we want to bring to you, simply so that we can put it on the calendar that has been approved already, the instructional dates, and now our graduation for both high schools, again, at the convention center, will be on May 30th. And we also did, the times are going to be the same as this past year with the addition that it will be 10, and I know we wanted to do the 2:00, but they said no, so they worked with us one hour, so it'll be 10 and 3:00 PM instead of 4:00, so, and that's something that they have in place, so that they can clean up, and so.
Is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir. Administration recommends approval.
Sumo.
Second.
Any further discussion by anybody? No? I got a motion by Mr. Gavero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
AS three, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of sync spell, read, and write student instructional materials, English and Spanish, for elementary campuses for pre-k second grades for the 2016-17 school year. And this particular six-floor undergrad is the phonics program that we use in the pre-k second grades across the district, and of course, this is something that we have initiated with all campuses, all elementaries, and we have, the reason why it says 2016-17, because we're still paying for this budget, or are kidding. So administration recommends approval, if there are no questions.
I move we approve.
Okay, any questions? Okay, a motion by Ms. Reyna to approve, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor. Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And this is a, this is a new program, I was. Well, it's kind of been around, but the new in the fact that we brought it district-wide to our early childhood, because again, one of our biggest goals that we have is early childhood industry, that we got. Okay, AS four, discussion and possible action on approval of memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Dona ISD and Texas A&amp;M University Literacy and Science Using Technology Innovation Opportunities, which is also the acronym of LISC, and this is where A&amp;M will partner up with Dona ISD on a validation grant project, LISC, providing ongoing staff development materials and technology for science activities embedded in literacy. And this is obviously, we focus in on both technology and science, and the fact that both high schools are also T-Stem, they kind of just hand in hand in that connection. So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's some stipends attached to this, is this, is the district going to cover the stipends, or is it part of this grant?
It's part of the grant.
Any other questions?
Other than, I'm assuming that one of the reasons why this particular professional development was picked is because of the embedding of literacy, which I, is awesome, but is there any other, where's Ms. Anderson? Oh, there you are, I saw you, I thought I saw you outside. Was there any other reason why, or that you want to share, like, why this program versus the many other programs?
Yeah, so we're really excited about it, and I'll have to tell you why. For many years, we've got, we've got.
Ms. Anderson, could you?
Oh, yeah. We've been working on science professional development for many years, and teachers are at the point where they know the content, but what we're struggling with, and they are having a hard time doing, is embedding literacy. So they're aware of it, they work on it, but the nice thing about this program is they'll be getting the materials to do it, they'll be getting the ongoing coaching to do it, and it's already embedded, so they won't have to say, oh, what strategy will I use with this activity? That's already been done for them, and there is nothing, even our book adoptions, they have literacy suggestions, but they're not so deeply connected and aligned the way this is. And the cool thing about it, the reason we're really excited about it, is the validation grant, so it's already been working elsewhere, and they got a lot of money to basically show that it can work for everybody. So it's A&amp;M, we are a little sad that not all the teachers can get the stipends, if we could have, we would have just had all the schools, but they have to have that control group. So it was randomly selected. The nice thing is that, I don't know how this happened, but you know those schools that are doing the simultaneous by literacy, so they're going to have a lot on their shoulders this year, none of those schools were randomly selected, so they won't have two things kind of fighting for their attention, so it'll be nice if these campuses can really focus on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Any other questions?
I made a motion.
Mr. Gavero made a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Avila made a motion? Second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Going on to BF one, business finance, BF one, discussion and possible action on resolution to approve signatories on depository and other accounts, now that Ms. Martinez is here, but in essence, as you recall, that our district is not going to be doing the Plains Capitol, and so this is basically saying that there's three signatures required, board president, superintendent, and our board secretary. Any questions? This can answer, or I? But if not, administration recommends approval.
So, motion by Mr. Gavero?
Second.
Second by Ms. Avila, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
BF two, discussion and possible action to award vendor for rebid, request for proposals, RFP 010417-352, electrical repair and services district-wide for school year 2017, 2018. And again, we're bringing this because we want to be able to get more. bucket, but it's gonna go up high to reach that. And sometimes some of these individuals cannot do that.
Any other discussion or questions? Recommendation is to approve the rebid? Sumo. This is a motion by Mr. Gavero, and a second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
BF three. Okay, BF three, similar to what we had, because we brought this before. Discuss, BF three, discussion and possible action to award vendors for rebid. A request for proposals, RFP 010417-353, security and fire alarm, system monitoring services, parts and repair services for the school year 2017-2018. And again, we have brought this to you all. This time we do have two, correct? Are you seeing in your packet there? So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
No questions, any discussion? There's a recommendation to approve?
I move.
The motion by Dr. Merritt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gavero. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Motion carries. Thinking. BF four?
BF four, discussion and possible action on budget amendments for the special revenue for the month of June 2017. And this time, I will turn this over to Ms. Martinez. We have questions.
Okay, any questions on BF four? Any discussion? Recommendation?
Administration, administration recommends approval.
Recommendation to approve? Need a motion?
I'd like to motion we approve.
Motion by Mr. Robina. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. BF three?
Okay, BF three, similar to what we had, because we brought this before. Discuss, BF three, discussion and possible action to award vendors for rebid. A request for proposals, RFP 010417-353, security and fire alarm, system monitoring services, parts and repair services for the school year 2017-2018. And again, we have brought this to you all. This time we do have two, correct? Are you seeing in your packet there? So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
No questions, any discussion? There's a recommendation to approve?
I move.
The motion by Dr. Merritt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gavero. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Motion carries. Thinking. BF four?
BF four, discussion and possible action on budget amendments for the special revenue for the month of June 2017. And this time, I will turn this over to Ms. Martinez. We have questions.
Okay, any questions on BF four? Any discussion? Recommendation?
Administration, administration recommends approval.
Recommendation to approve? Need a motion?
I'd like to motion we approve.
Motion by Mr. Robina. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laina. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Motion carries. Thinking. BF five?
BF four, discussion and possible action on budget amendments for the special revenue for the month of June 2017. And this time, I will turn this over to Ms. Martinez. We have questions.
Okay, any questions on BF four? Any discussion? Recommendation?
Administration, administration recommends approval.
Recommendation to approve? Need a motion?
I'd like to motion we approve.
Motion by Mr. Robina. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laina. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
I oppose.
Okay, and I'll vote in favor?
Favor.
Motion carries.
BF five? BF five, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action to reject and rebid request for proposal, RFP number 032417-358, MOPS and MATS district-wide for school year 2017-2018. This one, Mr. Franch, do you wanna add anything to this?
No, we're going out because everybody pretty much gave us prices as if we were gonna be purchasing them, not necessarily we're going to be leasing them. So we're going out and we want a rebid.
Oh, that's what the, as a result, lack of participation for lease option as a result of insufficient specifications. Oh, okay.
So you're recommending leasing MOPS?
Yeah. It's the, it's, it's not your typical mop, your, your regular mop, it's the, it's the long ones.
They're kinda old as well.
Yeah, the old ones, yeah.
I make too much of a word for it.
Not for mopping, they're, they're.
Well, they're called MOPS.
They're sweaters, they're sweaters though, they go up and sweep up the hulls up and down.
Do we have more participation last year when this was bid out, or when was the last time it was bid out?
It was bid out, the, the three years ago.
Do we have a lot of participation now?
Yeah.
I think I had a motion over here from Mr. Robina.
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Project rebid.
Moving on to human resources. Mr. President, trustees, HR one, discussion and possible action to afford student accident athletic insurance for the school year 2017-2018. And this one, if there's any questions, we have both our athletic campus coordinators, and also we have this engine of the real safety risk director, this is dealing with student athletic insurance.
Okay, I would like to add something to this. Looking at the, at the three people that bid, I had a conversation with Mr., with Coach LeHodgden, and he gave me a, a reason why they wanted to go with the Texas Insurance Service Center. And quite frankly, I was looking at that student insurance plan as being something that we could use, but he brought out something that was very important, and I would like for him to come up and address the board and let us know what it is, the different shades one from the other. By the way, I also met with Coach Morello at Lex Tech, and he told me the same thing. So hopefully he repeats it again. All right.
So we, we really did take a lot of time looking at the different proposals, mainly because of the cost difference. And so for, I think like halfway through, I think like an hour, an hour and a half, then going through them, we were giving like interest in settles that possibly student insurance plan was probably the best deal for us, because we were really moved by the premium. And in looking at things, it seemed like we were really looking at apples to apples. But when we started digging into the network and really looking at the network of providers that our students utilize, and especially looking at that trauma one hospital in McCallen, which is McCallen Medical, the student insurance plan does not have McCallen Medical in their network. We did have one of our trainers with us in the process, and she reached out to a local school district here that has student insurance plan. And what they told us was that the past five years, they've been trying to get McCallen Medical into the student insurance plan network, and they, they haven't been able to. So we also reached out to the representative for student insurance plan, and he kept guaranteeing us that McCallen Medical would be on their network come August 1st. But then in speaking to the local school district, they said it's been five years, and that it hasn't happened. So for us, that, that was a major, McCallen Medical is the only trauma one hospital here in the Valley, and they are not in network with student insurance plan. So if our students do end up going there, they will not get the discount, and so they will be left with a huge bill.
And I, just to add, what happens with that is, we're in a football game, and if we're in a football game, and a kid has a spine injury, a neck injury, or like, I don't know if you're familiar, PSG North had a JVD where the kid had a robotic confession, had an emergency surgery, they rush him to McCallen Medical. The ambulance is gonna take him there, because it's trauma one, they have a surgeon there on staff, ready to go. They're gonna take him there, and we have no control over that. He had emergency surgery right then. If, we don't have anybody able to, if they let them over, their parents are gonna have to probably take most of all that. That's the big deal with the, the trauma, trauma one. So that is why we're the biggest thing.
That's, that's one big thing, too, but also that I, I looked at that's big is the, when you look at, at Kaven, they, they use ABA guys, which we had about two, three years ago as one of our insurers did, and it was true. It was the, the pain, you know, getting the, you know, getting the claims paid for, there was quite a bit of problems with it, okay? Not only that, we looked at to LaHoya ISD, who uses it, and we looked at some of the claims that were there, what was, what was paid for, and so we see that there's, there's some questions, how it was. And then we know, you know, in our district and stuff, our families are used to, you know, obviously if they don't have insurance, this is their primary for their athletes and stuff, when it happens. It's not, you know, if they have insurance, this comes in as a secondary, obviously. You know, so, you know, we just feel it's to the best interests of our kids, health-wise, you know, our parents and overall, you know, in order to, yeah, maybe we have to pay a little bit more for it to do it, but we just feel that it's necessary.
Are you going to do the cost analysis per athlete based on these premiums? How much is it costing us per kid, per student athlete?
Well, every year it varies. We have a cost, I think I shared with Mr. Stasur, we had it, we had it, had it be on all the different claims that we've gotten before. And, you know, one year we went over the amount that, that we actually, that they charged.
The question is, I mean, let's say that we're using 551, $22,900, $2,000, right? How many athletes do we have, and, you know, I mean, when we break it down?
This will be also good.
I, just to kind of give you an idea of how many.
Services?
Yeah. If we looked at just athletes, I'd have to do a count, but.
Yeah, all right here.
The, the thing to consider with this plan, though, is that it, it covers, it doesn't just cover the athletes, it covers ROTC, BAN, or cheerleading, and, and it will also cover, it also covers students who are on a field trip. So we're talking our pre-K, our first graders, if they're on a field trip and they get hurt, they also get covered. So I mean, if you really wanted to look at it, it'd be all 15,000 of students that are covered. The bulk of the students, though, are, are the, the athletes, BAN, ROTC that utilize the service, because all of the ones that are out there in sports getting hurt.
So what, what do we have this last year?
The second.
The same one.
Oh, the student insurance plan is what we have this year.
And the network within comparison to Kaven, which is the second one, is Kaven close. It's like.
So what's the recommendation, Mr. President?
Recommendations go to, to, to be with Texas Insurance Service Center.
The only, the only decision I think we kind of do need from the board is, we did ask for two, three different options from each, from each vendor who submitted a proposal, and we did receive two different options through Texas Insurance, so it's a matter of which option do you want. Just basically, the, the main difference in those two is that the option two is, it pays out the same, the only difference is there's limits. And I'll just give you an example of a limit with, with the option two. Therapy sessions are unlimited in option one, with option two, they're limited to like 15, 20 therapy sessions. So those kinds of things, I'm, I'm talking about limits.
Price wise, what about price wise? What are you saying?
We're looking at.
It's about 21,000.
21,000 dollars.
Is the difference. And not, not only that, though, you also have this, here's the deal, if for, for some reason, a parent forgets, makes those things, takes their child to an out-of-network provider or facility, they're not gonna be covered 100% even customary, okay, because that reason for they went out of network.
There's limitations.
That's, that's the other thing that you, that could happen to you, and they're gonna come.
And I don't think the difference is Bart's own number, 20,000 dollars for 15,000 kids that are gonna go to field trips.
So does, does this cover every single, a student in the district?
No activities.
So long as they're not spending like an overnight, they'll cover. So if they, if they go.
They say that we have student A who's out playing on the, the swings outside of the playground, falls down, that's not covered.
Okay, because this is specific for UOL and ROTC.
But if they go to the field, something like that, the elementary, right? That would be covered.
Be considered a day field trip, yes.
A day field.
Not PE. Not outside.
They go on a field trip.
So is the recommendation?
Any other discussions?
Yeah, I'd like to have, our, the insurance consultant was advised, or able to consult us on this.
Mr. Do you want to answer? Or do you want me to address it?
I mean, that's what he's here for, to, to help us, guide us through this, and I asked him today, and he said he didn't receive any finders on this.
I'm not sure why he was not involved. I know.
Why aren't we not sure why he wasn't involved? He's, that's part of his job, is to oversee our insurance policies throughout the district. That's what we pay him for.
I really don't have an answer. I, I just, we just did the RFPs ourselves, and we, we knew what we're looking for, we had a research committee, these individuals have done it before, and they were looking for specific things for our, our students.
So is the recommendation option one or two?
We would say that.
I would say, you know, looking at, looking at the differences, see, the option one covers them 100% wherever, right? The option two, with that one, if you go out of network and you're gonna, the kid's gonna incur a bill, and if, if for some reason, maybe their family doctor, or their surgeon they choose to go with, because that's the one that they trust, is not in the network, then they would have to pay the difference.
So that's why the recommendation's option one.
That's why they're recommending.
And the difference is 21,000.
I couldn't answer that question, but I mean, I even.
Can we all hear the discussion?
Well, sure, I think it should be brought up, because I mean, if that's a question we all need to know.
Okay. A lot of whispering, and it's like, I think we need to be advised, so I would advise that he's not licensed in the top priority to assist with that.
Which is why he didn't assist with it.
That's what I'm told.
Any, any further discussion? We have a recommendation to approve? Option one.
With Texas Insurance.
With Texas Insurance Service Center. 100% usual and customary. So that's, that's the, the recommendation?
Let's ask another question real quick before we go to vote, is, are we on a timeline here?
They say that we have student A who's out playing on the, the swings outside of the playground, falls down, that's not covered.
Okay, because this is specific for UOL and ROTC, cheerleading.
But if they go to the field, something like that, the elementary, right?
PE considered a day field trip, yes.
A day field trip.
Not PE, not out of, out of.
They want a field trip.
So, the recommendation?
Any other discussions there?
Yeah, I'd like to have our, the insurance consultant was advised or able to consult us on this.
Mr. Castillo, do you want to answer? Or do you want me to address it?
I mean, that's what he's here for, to, to help us, guide us through this. And I asked him today, and he said he didn't receive any finders on this.
I'm not sure why he was not involved. I know...
Why aren't we not sure why he wasn't involved? He's, that's part of his job, is to oversee our insurance policies throughout the district. That's what we pay him for.
I really don't know an answer. I, I just, we just did the RFPs ourselves, and we, we knew what we're looking for. We had a research committee with these individuals that done it before, and they were looking for specific things for our students.
So, is the recommendation option one or two?
We would say that the...
I would say, you know, looking at, looking at the differences, see, the option one covers them a hundred percent wherever, right? The option two, with that one, if you go out of network and you're going, the kid's going to incur bill. And if, if for some reason, maybe their family doctor or their surgeon they choose to go with, because that's the one that they trust, is not in the network, then they would have to pay the difference.
So, that's why the recommendation's option one.
That's why the recommendation.
And the difference is twenty-one thousand.
I couldn't answer that question, but I mean, I even...
Can we all hear the discussion?
Well, sure, I think it should be brought up, because I mean, if that's a question we all need to know.
Okay. A lot of whispering, and it's like, I think we need to be advised. So, I would advise that he's not licensed in the top priority penalty to assist with that.
Which is why he didn't assist with it.
That's what I'm told.
Any, any further discussion? We have a recommendation to approve option one.
With Texas Insurance.
With Texas Insurance Service Senate. Hundred percent usual and customary. So, that's, that's the recommendation.
May I ask another question real quick before we go to vote? Is, are we on a timeline here? We're, we're limited on time as far as?
We have to have this in place before August the first, because that's when our volleyball starts on that day.
We can't have it by then. Volleyball starts.
So, we've got another business meeting coming up on next Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Do we, we have a board meeting?
Sure do.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
We also have a workshop on Monday. I would feel more comfortable if we can just clarify the question that was brought up, and then we'll go from there. I'm not denying your recommendation, that's, you feel that's what's best. Let's go for it, but I still would like some consultation in regards to this, so that I have peace of mind that we're doing, we're moving in the right direction. And that's the case, I would like to table it.
So, we, do we do a comparison of their bid with what other districts are paying?
As far as...
What they basically do is they get all our information, of course, how many students they're going to serve. To compare us, let's take them account, or compare to West Coast, it's going to be a different, it's not going to be the same quote, because you're talking about, it's like you're saying, oh, I want insurance with two cars, I have insurance with five cars. It's not the same thing. So, that's what we, how it comes down, to basic analysis. How much did they pay last year? How many students they're going to be serving? And that's how they break it down. So, they have to use special customer.
So, I'm saying that that was the reason I asked you, how many, how many student athletes or how many students? I mean, you've got to have a, an amount of students.
Yeah, we have to, we have to add, sum them up. I don't know if you got this, but...
No, we didn't get that. We have to, because we've got to drop it down by sport.
By sport.
Right. So, maybe in the future include it in, so that we, we can save time.
I guess for also the middle school, because it's also for high school. Like I said, it's...
Also, it could be every year, like last year, we paid a higher premium with this company last year.
It's cheaper than last year.
We went down because obviously we had those claims. And after, absolutely, nearly almost twenty thousand.
So, it's less than last year, it's the same company we use, and it's, it's work for so forth. But, right, it just depends on the non-claims.
Okay, I think there was a motion by Mr. Billman, and he was, he was asking to table, to table this.
Table this up, up for this next coming meeting on Tuesday. Let's get some more clarification, please, but that is my motion.
Till next Tuesday. So, that's his motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Dr. Mary. Do all those in favor?
Favor.
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 Motion carries. And we'll, we'll look at it next week.
Sure. We have to go time.
Okay.
And do you include the information for...
For the mountain kids?
Yes, the mountain kids.
Because I mean, that one, we got a, a...
Sure, you can break it down.
First student.
And if you want to, we can get you, I guess, the claims we answered, or what we gave you.
We post, so we haven't, we haven't added, so we don't, we don't have that to post. I have to be here tomorrow.
It'll be the same one as your students.
Okay. There was HR one. Thank you.
Thank you, coaches. Mr. President, trustees, please make a correction. I apologize, VHR two, scratch out the three, put it two on there. And this is discussion of possible action to approve proposed policy FFA, and that is not repeated, Department of American FFA, okay? Local is recommended by TASB, Officer Nara.
Yes, sir. If you all recall, on June sixth, that we brought this same policy before you, and there was a policy that was created through our child nutrition program for a audit that we were under. And we sent that policy into TASB to publish, and TASB reviews all our policies to make sure that we are legally meeting all the requirements. Well, they sent us a letter back saying that we did not meet all the requirements, and they sent us a template that we could use, that our district could use to complete, send back to them, and they would compose a policy based on our responses to that template to ensure that we met all the requirements in the guidelines set forth by the federal government. And when we brought, when we received the updated policy, the proposed policy, we noticed that there was a lot of, the bulk of the responsibilities of the wellness program fell on the SHAC committee. The SHAC stands for the School Health Advisory Council, and it's managed by the district, and it's composed by various members. And they're the ones that, that come up with the goals and objectives for not only nutritional, but also physical activities, and not only promote, but also announce, and they encourage. And there's just a slew of objectives that are, that are managed by the SHAC committee. And the final piece that I noticed that was a big difference was the evaluation piece. In our old policy, it did have an implementation component. This one has implementation, evaluation, public information. I mean, there was a slew of changes into that policy. So, it was more robust, and it guaranteed that it does meet the requirements by, set forth by the council. So, we want to bring it back to you, so we can be compliant.
Any questions or comments, trustees?
Any questions or comments?
Recommendation is to approve, administration recommends, Mr. President, trustees.
Recommendation to approve? The motion?
Is this something, Mr. Nara?
Yes, sir.
Is this something that, once it's approved, I know it's, it's got various levels of responsibility for making sure that these things are implemented. Is this something that will be referred to the teachers?
It's going, well, it's going to go to the SHAC committee with the revised, it's going to be revised. So, the SHAC will get a copy of this, and they'll be in charge of implementing this policy, unfortunately.
I know that, I don't know whether, I haven't really, you know, but I'm sure that it has issues here where there are certain types of foods, drinks, and beverages that are and are not permitted to be there or consumed.
Right. Mr. Kitania can probably answer those, those specific questions about the, the requirements for the reimbursable meals and the nutritional values.
Let's say that you have teacher A for Club A, and they're selling tacos and with chile and all that spices and stuff. And I don't know whether that stuff meets or exceeds.
That, yeah, that will be governed by the actual, the child nutrition program and their guidelines and the restrictions for what foods can be sold.
Yeah, but it's also happening at the campuses. So, does the responsibility fall on, on, you know, Ms. Kitania may not be there, so it's the principal's responsibility to, to make sure that she's aware of what's going on, and to make sure that she's aware of, or he receives, as far as the festival, of what their teachers are selling after school, during lunch, you know?
You want to address that?
Well, it's important to worry about that, but bottom line, at the end of the day, remember I was telling you on the last board meeting that the rules changed two years ago, that now anything sold on campus and, you know, all that kind of stuff needs to abide by snacks, smart snacks rules. So, bottom line, at the end of the day, I know at the beginning of the year, last year, Mr. Castillo involved me in the principals' meetings time and time again to tell them, should we be selling anything? And you are exempt six fundraisers days, and you need to submit to me what six days you're going to sell. I want someone to call and say, hey, there's something hot Cheetos. And I called the principal, and she says, well, it's one of our days, you know, because it's going to be that day every day. So, if you have a binder with the six set dates from the principals at the beginning of the year, that Mr. Castillo made them set the dates, if they are going to change one immediately when they know, they can call and change. They are aware that they shouldn't be selling from midnight until thirty minutes after the last bill. The only people that are allowed to sell certain stuff that are kind of exempt because of the smart snacks and what they're selling and the location are the libraries at the high schools. Those are allowed to sell. So, they'll get more flexibility, and they can sell. So, and then the other rules are still the same, that if the food is given to the students, but not based on test scores, then it's allowed to be given, and it can be given at any time of the day.
So, you can't give hot Cheetos or...
They can give them, yes.
As long as they're gifts.
I go for now. I guess that's a loophole they failed to see, but...
That was my concern, because I know that, that, you know, you see that happening, that a lot of...
They can give them to them, but it has to be equal across the board. You can't say, well, these five students passed the, you know, their test, so they're going to get Cheetos, but you're not, you know, it has to be all across the board.
So, if you go into one...
One, you have to give it to all of them. The only exception is perfect attendance. So, if they have perfect attendance, of course, you know, there is only there one or more that get the kids to go to school. Whether it's based on, on test results, you can't praise only the ones that pass and not the ones that didn't pass.
And sure, students can be selected. You say that they attended after-school tutorials.
Yes. Yes, a tutorial is, yes. They can be given as long as they're given in the program.
And I noticed, and the reason I'm, I'm saying is, is because I've, I've noticed that when the, the, I see some of the bills and stuff from SABs.
Yes.
You start seeing hot Cheetos, tacos, you know?
If you give them hot Cheetos with cheese on Saturday for touring, they won't help.
And we're okay, we're, we're not being out of compliance with this.
As long as you're not selling to them, we're not, we're not.
I have a, I have a question for you. I'm looking at this, and it's kind of confusing.
I was going to ask the same question. This is the policy, right? The first page.
This is what I have. Is this what we're looking at? Because it has a, it has a worksheet, and that worksheet doesn't seem to have been applied yet, or is it already applied?
It's going to be...
It's been applied, yes. I gave you a blank, a blank one, but the one that we submitted to TASB, it has the X's on those lines. The director, Ms. Kitania and Mr. Anies, went through them, and they marked the indicated ones that we're going to apply, or that we're doing. And that was in turn turned into a policy. And if you notice, on the last part of the policy, it, it, it's not really specifying like what you could eat or, or things like that. They, they actually are kind of like a larger umbrella. The SHAC committee is to enforce a great, a good environment, a healthy environment. You need to have enough time to eat, you know, the clean, safe cafeteria. So, it's kind of like an overarching umbrella as to make sure that everything is healthy and safe for the students.
So, this is not, this three pages is not the complete policy?
That's just the policy that we need to, to comply with.
So, this is kind of like the supplementary, what you all submitted. This is the final three pages.
The thing is that a lot of the districts haven't updated their wellness policies in like two, fifteen years, because I think that would be one of the first times they required certain requirements. So, when we were audited in January, they told us, just draw the draft, you know, to show that you're kind of working on something. So, you know, I was kind of like wanting to put everything in detail, but then after speaking to a couple of other directors from other towns, they said, no, it just needs to be very general. It just needs to be in compliance and very general. You at the local level, you can make it stricter, but you can't make it more or less. So, you still have to abide by the minimum smart snacks, and you can, you know, you're going to survive stricter, but you can't allow them to sell during the day would be any more convenient with the minimum.
And this means the minimum?
That is the minimum. There's only a couple of other districts that have actually updated theirs, and, and I kind of tried to see, you know, where they were at, and that's, they said, keep it as general as possible, and at the local level, if you can apply and be more strict if you want. If not, at the end of the day, if you have to refer to TV policy that's online, then they can go ahead and do that, and that's, that will be the minimum that we can go.
That's true.
Motion is continued? Is your recommendation right now? Do you accept this?
Yes, it's, that's, that's...
I make the motion, we approve.
Before we make a motion, let's, let's find out if somebody else has more discussions or any other questions. Anybody else have any questions for discussion? Okay, got a motion by Mr. Anida, and a second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
I have, I have one question. How are we going to be doing on the cookie? Are we doing okay?
Yes.
That's important.
If order to the clock in front of me, it does say seven oh nine, right?
That's correct. That's her.
Okay, we're going into executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code Sections five line one, dot oh seven one, dot oh seven two, dot oh seven three, dot oh seven four, dot oh seven five, dot oh seven six, dot oh eight two, dot oh three, and dot oh eight four. The time is, according to that clock, is seven oh nine. I know it's wrong.
It's wrong.
Okay, time is eleven oh eight. Oh, I'm sorry, they changed the clock. It's eleven eleven. And we're back from the go session. We continue with the meeting.
Mr. President, trustees. Open session, letter A, discussion of possible action to approve, the approval of super-dedged recognition of personnel. Administration recommends to approve as discussed in executive session.
Is there a recommendation to approve?
Make the motion, we approve.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Anida, second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed? Motion carries. Letter B.
Mr. President, trustees, letter B, discussion of possible action to approve of district personnel. Administration recommends as discussed in executive session. Sub move.
Sub motion by Mr. Guerrero.
Second.
Second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Letter C, our meeting, and then this is going to be a correction. Discussion of possible action regarding level three grievance of burdened customers.
Having heard the, the grievance, do I have a motion?
I'll, I just want to share before somebody makes a motion. This was a really hard, difficult decision. On one end, there was ethical concerns, and then on the other end, there was like legal implications. It was just a hard decision.
No motion?
A move that we, as discussed in executive deny, based on the legal.
Okay, there's a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
So, second by Mr. Billman. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor, Mr.?
I vote against.
And I vote in favor. So, motion carries.
At our date, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action regarding level three grievance of the Ana Kitania. This is what, what action.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant in part and deny in part Ms. Kitania's level three grievance as follows. One, the granting of that any and all harassment or retaliation against Ms. Kitania for plotting her claim being enforced, okay? The other remedy requested is being denied because that's outside the scope of our, our, outside the scope of our ability to do what you're asking us to do. Right now, there is still pending audit, forensic audit pending, no, so. At this point, we're going to deny this, your first part of your claim, and approve the part of any type of harassment or retaliation.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Guerrero.
I second it.
And a second by Mr. Billman. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor. In favor.
Favor.
Favor. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, trustees, we're going into F as noted, that it's going to be an open session. Discussion of possible action regarding termination of police chief. As for the personnel audit conducted by General Counsel and the findings reported, administration recommends termination of police chief.
Your recommendation is to terminate the police chief. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Billman.
Second.
Second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Favor. Anybody opposed?
Letter G, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action regarding approval or rejection of the letters of assurance. Administration recommends approval as noted with the one individual that was discussed.
I move we approve.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, and by Ms. Reyna, and a second by Mr. Anida. All in favor?
Oppose.
Oppose.
And I'm going to vote in favor. Motion carries. Letter H? Okay, do you need a motion to adjourn? The move. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Do you need a adjourn?
Yep. Seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen. Is everybody going to the children?